Okay, we're gonna get started. We're gonna call to order the Board of Education Workshop for the purpose of considering the superintendent's proposed operating budget. We are very grateful to our administrative coordinator today and know that you have a lot to do, but we're very pleased today. We're gonna hear from three of our building principals, Miller Driscoll, Cyron Mill, and Neil Brook, and we are also grateful for our special education and our assistant superintendent.
I'm so grateful for the
I talked to Superintendent Smith this morning about the format he followed and I was very happy to hear him say that he didn't ask you guys to prepare any big slide decks or anything, so we're just gonna have a chat. We're just gonna discuss what he thought would work best. And I think he's communicated to you is just if we could maybe start with Kathy and Miller Driscoll, go through what you, you know, how you arrived at your budget and what you added, what got left out, what you, you know, in a perfect form, what, you know, if we won Powerball, what would we be able to throw in there?
Well, then I need to add a couple of things in.
To ask a couple of questions and then we'll move on to the other schools.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
It's all yours, baby.
Okay, so I'm gonna go first and of course I have to start with a funny story.
All right.
So we have a little preschooler. His name is Huey and on one of those really cold days when we came back after the December break, I got an email from Huey's mom who wanted to share what he had told her when he, she picked him up that day. So she picked him up that day and he said to her, "Just so you know, we couldn't go outside today. The princess said it was too cold."
So he said?
So to say. And then he was like, "Or is it, right, or is it the prince?" You know, whatever they call that boss lady of the school. So you can call me Kathy or Princess Kathy, anyway, however you wanna do it, but we just thought that was super cute, so.
See how the presentation
I know. I didn't bring my tiara, although if we won the Powerball, maybe you guys could buy me one, so there we go. But I just wanna say thank you to all of you. I know you're thanking us for our time, but last year we did not do this, so this is my first budget workshop, as is Lauren's, because we've only been here at 1.5 years.
That's right.
Which is like five minutes, but I do wanna say thank you because we never
Ten years and cat years.
What?
Ten years and cat years.
Exactly.
And principal years, it's ten years, right.
But it is nice to be able to share, because as Kevin has said, last year we kind of, you know, we did the zero, we did it behind closed doors, and we never really got to say, you know, what we would have liked to have had, so. So I'm gonna walk you through just a little bit of history of what's happened at Miller Driscoll in the very, very short time that I've been here, and then talk to you about sort of my kind of three budget priorities when I went in and presented to Kevin and the cabinet-level team, before they started laughing at me for what I wanted, and then, you know, kind of talk about what was able to stay in the budget. So one big piece of what, and I say "we" because my administrative team, but also my staff have been amazing, so one thing we have done is a huge reorganization of the preschool. And the preschool really is a part of our school now, and that came out in a faculty conversation today. So our little pre-K kids are going to specials, you know, with the same specials teachers as everyone else, and that reorganization has been amazing because the staff also comes to all of our professional development, the preschool comes to assemblies, you know, they participate in everything. And we really did redesign that program to be truly inclusive. So when I came to Wilton, there was a tiered system for classes, so kids with the most severe disabilities were put in classes together, as opposed to, you know, all the kids being included. And so we got rid of that tiered model and now, again, the classes are truly inclusive and all the kids are learning together. In addition, we have a sharing of the related service staff, so there are some who have the majority of their caseload in preschool, but then they also, you know, see students from the K to 2 side and provide support to the teachers on that kindergarten to second grade side as well. Some kids, when they move up from preschool, we make a decision that it would be really nice to have that related service person come with them to kindergarten. And so now that again we're pre-k to, that flexibility is huge in our school. We've done other really proactive things also around special education, around communication with parents. We do welcome back letters. We make sure there's communication before meetings. And we changed the procedures to prepare the paperwork and all of that for meetings, which I think has shown in a decrease in the number of IEP meetings we've needed to have, because there's a lot of communication and preparation outside of those meetings. In addition, this year we did change the coaching model to improve that collaboration with teachers. And again, at the faculty conversations that Chuck and Kevin both came to, it was amazing that the teachers were talking about how much they value that coaching model and that collaborative model, and they really would like more time to be able to collaborate. And then last but absolutely not least, I think we have a huge improvement in our school culture and climate, so I think that, you know, kind of permeates our administrative team, our teaching staff, our kids, and our parents. So over the last few years, we have
Before you go on, though, I just wanna add that one thing you didn't mention was how you reconfigured the staffing in preschool to be much more effective and efficient through our professional staff.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna talk about that
I'm sorry.
And, and just a little bit.
Okay.
Gonna talk about it now?
No, it's okay. I didn't want you to miss that, though.
Oh, don't let me forget.
And I
I know you want.
I would just like
Oh, good, and I can have a drink of water now.
Yes. Also, I think you understated the importance of those shared related services across the school. It makes it a much more effective and efficient way to utilize staff.
Exactly.
Sorry.
That's okay.
No, he feels pretty dumb about it.
You may add this, but did you extend the day for pre-k? So instead of a half-day, it's a more of a longer day?
Well, we changed, we kind of changed the whole model, which I'll talk about later when I get to the preschool part, but we did change the model where last year we had kids who would come half-day either morning or afternoon, and then some kids who would stay full day. So now everyone comes, the 8:45 to 1:15, and then the kids who will be kindergarten-eligible next year have the option of staying on Tuesdays and Thursdays for the whole day, just so they're kind of getting their, you know, getting used to that longer day.
Okay, bye.
Yeah, yeah. So in that first year that I was here, last, just last year, we did have a lot of cuts. There was a cut to a preschool director. There were five preschool paras that were cut, a .8 preschool speech clinician. There, oh, I'm sorry.
Five preschool paras?
Mm-hmm.
And before that?
The preschool director?
Yeah.
There was a .8 preschool speech clinician who was reduced over the year, and then she actually resigned and she was not replaced. Also, there, because we became a pre-k to 2 school, there was no need for adaptive art or adaptive music, because the kids started going to specials with our specialists. Outside of preschool, there was a cut to our kindergarten paras, and we did add on a preschool PPT facilitator, just a .6. And then this year, we had two classroom teachers cut. We had a 1.0 reading interventionist cut, a .2 in occupational therapy, a .5 technology para, a .5 science para. This year was the reorganization of the preschool with a new model, so a classroom teacher and a 1.7 para in each of those classrooms. We did get to add a .5 science specialist that I'm gonna talk a lot about, because we're really happy about that. So now our goals. So my goals coming into my budget presentation, again, with Kevin and his cabinet, were around three kind of big items, one being collaboration, one being the utilization of a STEAM model for the students, and then the other one around pre-k. So the first one I wanna talk about is collaboration, and I'm gonna give you We really did take a collaborative approach to this year, and it started in the summer with our leadership team, where we met and reviewed a lot of data, not just math data, but F and P data, culture and climate data. And as a leadership group, the leadership group is, has grade-level team leaders from all of the grades, including pre-k, mental health representation, coaches, administrators, and then we actually now have a specialist from that whole art, music, PE library sitting on the leadership team. But over the summer, we came up with these two theories of action, which I know I shared when I shared my strategic improvement plan. And these really are two areas that are kind of, guide all of the work that we do. So that was sort of our first very significant collaborative endeavor, and I have to say, I was really proud of the fact that we developed a strategic plan as a collaborative group, got to then share the draft of that plan out with the teachers, get their feedback, make some tweaks to that plan before we then presented it to you. So I feel like we actually did it the way it was done, instead of a bunch of us administrators sitting in a room and coming up with what everybody else should do. So that was the first collaborative piece. And then we did make some changes this year also to the way we do our instructional effectiveness teams and the coaching support for that. So we modified our use of the humanities coaches and assigned them by grade level, and the humanities coaches work with the team leaders to prepare the agenda and facilitate those instructional effectiveness team meetings that we are, that based on our current schedule, we only get to have one time a week for 30 minutes. So a big priority for us is to increase that collaboration time. And so going into this budget, I proposed, because of the success of our STEAM lab, so the first two are gonna kind of overlap, I proposed adding some teachers who would actually specialize in the area of science to be able to deliver that science instruction, utilizing a STEAM and inquiry model. Again, this is sort of twofold. It builds on the next-generation science standards. We would get some efficiency back based on the training and the number of kits that would need to be bought if you had every single elementary school or Miller Driscoll teacher teaching those units. So it would all, we would also open up another STEAM lab is how we would do it, but we would have then the teachers teaching science two times 45 minutes a week to all of the students.
I'm sorry, so it's, right now, you've got one STEAM lab and you've got one teacher?
A .5 science specialist, I would call him. He does some coaching and then does some instruction with the kids, Kevin Meehan.
Okay.
That I share with Jen.
Okay.
So right now, he just teaches some of the lessons, so depending, the teachers right now rotate. They do a social studies unit and then a science unit. And we introduced new units in kindergarten this year, and so some of those lessons Kevin Meehan has been teaching, and again, across all the units in all the grades. And the kids come down to the STEAM lab, and so he does some collaborative teaching with the classroom teachers in there.
Okay.
And then also helps to support them, along with Laura Cannell, who's our math and science coach, in the instruction they do in the classroom. But the kids love the STEAM lab. And if you notice on your picture there, they even, one of the kindergarten classes, the parents made those cute little lab-looking coats. Come on, I so adore that. But anyway, they, they really do love it, and we've been able to, through a generous anonymous donation, kind of build our STEAM lab. So we have a great fish tank in there. We now have a magnetic wall that they're using for their push-and-pull unit. We just got some whiteboard tables. We have a 3D printer. We have a, it's a smart table, but it's kind of like a Promethean table that's coming. We bought some microscopes that instead of having to look through just the little, you know, eyepiece, it actually shows what's under the microscope on a little screen. So again, making things much more accessible. And I know Gretchen was at our, happened, just happened to be at our PTA meeting this morning where the teachers were sharing, and there were actually some, you know, great stories from the teachers about the kids going to the STEAM lab and even some videos. So, so it was, it was the addition of these, you know, kind of science specialists would, like I said, be twofold, give the kids that opportunity to, you know, work on inquiry and those NGSS standards in a different way, but also give our teachers the collaboration time. That's, you know, that's also a district priority to be able to facilitate this collaboration with the teachers, because again, just the number of specialists we have for the number of classes, not just K to 2, but then also preschool classes, there's limited planning time for the teachers.
So repeat again what you're asking for?
Don't make a pause.
Going from .5 to
I was asking for
And one lab to what?
I was asking for an additional 2.5 science teachers.
2.5.
Mm-hmm.
But it didn't make it.
Oh, but it didn't make it, okay.
Uh-uh, right. It's not there.
What is? Is just Kevin?
Nothing.
The .5?
The .5 of Kevin, which I think sits in the district budget.
And you were asking for more STEAM labs?
Well, we would be able to utilize, there's a room next door right now where our, the math, science, and then Kevin, Meehan have their offices, so we would just make two STEAM labs right next to each other. And then again, create a schedule where the kids would be getting science two times 45 minutes a week. So it would kind of change that, it wouldn't be the rotation then of social studies and science. Kids would be doing social studies and science always.
Two times a week.
But the two times 45 science would again, give them an opportunity to have, you know, science taught by a teacher who was sort of specializing in that area. We'd then be able to send this, you know, smaller number of teachers, again, off to Science 21, which is where we're getting a lot of our units for the training and the inquiry and the next-generation science standards.
So currently, who is teaching the science? Kevin's?
The classroom teachers are teaching it, and then Kevin Meehan teaches select lessons, so he'll schedule, you know, with all the, if kindergarten is in a unit. So kindergarten just culminated their unit, their weather unit with a save the snowman lesson where kids had to create a structure that would then hold up outside in the sunshine. I know we have so much fun, right?
I know, I love kindergarten.
And, and so they did that in the STEAM lab, and then the snowman was an ice cube. And then they had to go out in the outdoor learning center and test out their save the snowman structure to see who's with
That's cool.
I have the best job ever.
You do. What, so do the teachers use the lab as well, or is that just for Kevin Meehan?
They do sometimes, but mostly Kevin does the lessons in there. And the teachers are there, doing the lessons right with Kevin. And a lot of times, we have parent volunteers, so they made some, you know, shaker, also in the weather unit, some shaker sort of snow globe kinds of things to represent what would a snowstorm look like versus a blizzard in your snow globe. Chuck was there for that, you know, so we have parent volunteers who come in as well.
When you say .5, is that like weekly or daily? What is that? .5 per week?
We, we share him, so.
Daily or weekly or what?
Daily.
Daily.
So you get him back and forth?
He gets half a day, okay.
Kathy, how much do the parent volunteers help? Well, they're helpful again in kind of that, like, within that sort of snow globe piece.
Well, when, when my kids were going through, it was only parent volunteers. Parent volunteers were, you would be, sign up to be a science mom.
Yep.
And you'd go get some training.
Yep.
And then you'd be responsible for courting the classroom teacher, like, oh, we're gonna come in next Tuesday and teach them about this.
Right.
And they, the teachers would rely, so if you had a good parent, your kids would learn a lot, but if you didn't have a good parent, not so much. So
Well, now it's much more
That's not happening at all anymore.
Well, it's much more directed by Kevin. So when the parents come in, we, the teachers felt strongly that they wanted to maintain that volunteer opportunity for the parents, right? Because, and we love that, like, the parents coming in.
Sure.
So now the teachers just come in and are, you know, sort of an extra set of hands, you know, in those, in that STEAM lab.
So it's not like the Rivers study?
And it's only for certain lessons. So it's for, like I said, when you're, when you're dipping some glitter and putting on the lid, right? There are parents in there that, so it's kind of needing an extra set of hands, but they're not doing the instruction.
And how much would you, how much do you think your proposals for science are driven by the next-generation standards?
Well, what we would like to do is take those next-generation science standards and combo that up with STEAM. So again, kind of also add in an arts piece, you know, to the, to the A part of the STEAM, not the STEM.
Cause the A, yeah.
But to kind of, you know, increase that collaboration. So I'm not really sure how to answer that question, but I just, I, I do think there is a benefit, well, first off, it's very hard at the elementary level, as Jen knows. Our teachers teach everything, right? And so things are constantly changing, and you're doing curriculum review, and the state is coming out with new things, and, you know, so I think having people who specialize in a particular area, and especially something like science, where again, these kids are going for, you know, a lesson every week or two, but are leaving so incredibly excited about science and inquiry, you know, I think it's very worthwhile, so.
So how many classes are in the STEAM lab at once?
Just one.
Okay, and if there were your extra one with the 2.5, how many would be?
Well, then we could schedule two classes, right?
More, I'd probably.
Two classes at a time in the STEAM lab.
So give teachers collaborative time. I was just wondering how many teachers then would be able to collaborate during that time?
We are masterful at scheduling, myself, and Jeanne Carley. So we would look at, you know, kind of also reworking some of the other time, so that again, we could get an IET. So like, right now, our IETs are half of a grade level, so either five, six, or seven teachers, depending upon the grade, but getting all of those teachers two times 45 minutes.
Okay.
So with that extra set, because right now, we have two music teachers, two library teachers, 2.6 PE teachers, and two art teachers. And again, they do pre-k to 2.
Right.
So.
If you got the 2.5, how much of that would be Kevin versus other people?
Kevin still be .5?
Kevin would still be .5, and again, I think
And then you hired two other full-time
Mm-hmm.
Science experts.
But there's, yeah.
Right. And again, what we would look at is to see if there were teachers who wanted to specialize in that area, so then we could send them. Right now, we have sent a couple of teachers, and this is working with Trudy.
Is this home-room teachers?
Pardon me?
I mean
Classroom teachers, right, to this NGSS training through Science 21. But obviously, you can't send a whole, you know, you can't send off 11 kindergarten teachers to a Science 21 training. We don't have enough subs. We need people for the kids.
So is that teacher who's being trained, coming back and training the other teachers who didn't train?
So they come back and, yes, share the information. Also then, kind of the number of kits that you have to buy and the materials that you have to buy. That was just an idea of how we would offset, try to offset some of the cost of, I realize that's adding on staff, so just some ideas we had around offsetting some of that.
Okay, so if I'm, I've got a sort of, I'm already confused about the regular, what's in the budget, let alone what's not in the budget.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, I'm not, I don't mind hearing the needs, that's, that's great. But in the budget currently, Kevin Meehan remains static. And then it just looked like in the budget book that there was a reduction of a .5 para-professional in science, but then there was an addition over with you. So you were gonna also split a para?
Well, how we did it, there was a change in the para allocation for this year.
Oh, okay.
So both in the media center and in the area of science. And so we don't share a person for our science para. I have a person who does the .5 tech para and the .5 science para, but she's in my building the whole time.
Got it, all right.
So
I mean, what happened specifically is Kevin was at my school full-time.
Yeah.
He now splits the two schools.
Right.
And we each have a .5 allocated, of a para allocated to our building.
Right, no, it just looked like in the budget book, anyway.
So there really was no
That there was a reduction in .5 para.
There was, for us.
For you.
But she got .5.
But I got .5 of Kevin.
Got it, now I get it.
Yeah, it was literally
Oh, all right, all right, because it wasn't
Which you don't see in that book, because he lives in
Because it's in central office.
Central office.
Now I get it.
I know, right?
Yeah.
But he shows up there.
Right, but, but also let me ask you a difficult question, which is
That's on Kevin?
In the, Kevin put forward some, if there was going to be additional to the 1.98% increase, there are some sort of tiered recommendations.
I didn't even make the tiers.
Okay, so that, I guess that's my question. So is the message that there are even more need, you know what I mean, meteor needs?
That show up on those tiers?
Yeah, because it's in a tier, just
Right.
Okay.
I'm just coming in with sort of what I came in with at my budget meeting.
Right.
My proposals.
That's right.
She didn't even
I mean, we all knew we were trying to get, come in at a 2.0, so we had really hard positions to make.
Yeah, I think the struggle for us, first, the, the thing that I am incredibly happy about and celebrate every day, my teachers want to collaborate. They are in such a good place right now. They are very happy with the coaching model the way that it is. They are very happy with the structure of the IETs. The leadership team is working very well. Their collaboration with us as an administrative team is working well. We just don't have the time. We don't have the time. We have the least amount of planning time out of any of the teachers in the district. Not to pit myself against these people, everybody else, but we have the least amount of time. And I just feel like I have this great group of people who really want to collaborate, and yet I don't have the time to give them, unfortunately.
Do you have a recommendation for that?
Yeah, you could give me some science people.
Okay.
No, that's fair.
So she would cover the collab time?
Right.
Can I go back to the tiered spending? The .3 specials has nothing to do with science. Those are, it was
No, that was Chuck's, Chuck has a proposal to rework some of the elementary schedules to try to get at it, but
This is just an alternate term.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, and then, but the, the additional $6,900 in training, is that to train the classroom teachers then? That's in the budget.
Mm-hmm, yep, that's in the budget.
So that would go, that would be reduced if, if there were full-time people
If we had this, right, right, because you'd have to train less, and then also the, hold on, let me get to science.
No, that, it's $8,450 for training and conferences.
Right, and then the other thing that
Which is a
Is around the general supply piece. So if you look in that line, around that
Oh, the $22,000?
Whatever you call this cost center. The general supplies, you see how they went from $4,800 to $22,980?
Yeah, somehow missed that one.
So you wouldn't need as many classroom kits, obviously, to support the curriculum, because you could just use those same kits.
Okay. So what number, that would go back to the $4,800?
I, I don't, I'd have to work with Trudy and see.
Oh, okay.
But it would be much less than, for 23, 20, almost $23,000.
So on the, on the tiered list, there's a request for an elementary social worker, which I had sent Kevin a question that, because I thought this was a new request, and apparently it is to keep it in the budget.
Correct.
So you are reducing status quo in the budget, anyway, proposed. Can you talk a little bit about the rationale for keeping the social worker? And I apologize if you had to read a question that made it sound like it was an ad, because it's not. I get it now. It's a replace, it's bringing it back.
Same with the OT.
Okay. So can you talk a little bit about that need?
Absolutely.
And, you know, what the thinking was to kind of bring it down, what, where that pressure was to do that, and then how it made it onto this tiered list in terms of, no, we really need it? Speak to that a little bit?
Yeah. And sort of, in our reorganization of the preschool, we also looked very closely, I looked very closely my first year at Miller Driscoll, at the whole mental health team. So I have one guidance counselor, three school psychologists that again span from preschool to grade 2, and then a .5 social worker. And so we, like I said, kind of re-looked at that team and looked at what we could do to be proactive. So our guidance counselor teaches lessons to every single class, social, emotional, you know, lessons. And then we organized that entire group and divided them to be specific support to classroom teachers. So we took all of the classroom teachers and everyone was assigned, a mental health person is sort of their go-to person. So when their tier-one kind of behavioral classroom management strategies weren't working, that was sort of the first person that they would go to. And we created this hierarchy of response, because it seemed to be, when I came, that if there was an issue, we'll use Chuck, because he's so quiet, but let's say Chuck was having a behavioral issue in a classroom, they would just call, they would call an administrator. That was their very first call. And so we, we again, tried to tier this response and this support to be able to say, first off, you have this, excuse me, mental health person that you can go to and talk about, Chuck, for example. This person could also come into your classroom and help you implement some strategies that they might have, could also help you around the SRBI portion, around behavior, and if we need to move into something more formal and they might need to actually do some more specific interventions. And then could also be available should a student go to a referral and need something, again, kind of more formalized. So our .5 social worker is a part of that team. And again, he, his work, Jim Martin, spans, you know, pre-k to 2. It's, a lot of his work is primarily in the preschool, and I would say it's a lot of work with Um, it's, a lot of his work is primarily in the preschool, and I would say um, it's a lot of work with parents. Uh, because kids coming into preschool who have disabilities, for the most part, have more severe disabilities. Um, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done with parents about what that means, what they can do at home, um, sort of, you know, what is, what's, what's this student's life gonna be as they, you know, go through school? Um, so I think he supports kids in the classrooms, he does direct service, he's assigned to, you know, classroom teachers, it's like I said, their mental health kind of go-to person. And that team has actually become very tight, they're doing a, a huge professional development um, on their own around mindfulness, and working with the classroom teachers on that. So I think, you know, that piece, that piece is huge, and again, when Chuck and Kevin came this morning to talk to the faculty about, you know, what are issues that you're seeing? Um, there is an increase in anxiety in the kiddos, even as young as, you know, our school. Um, and so, I think, you know, I, it would definitely have an impact to lose that support.
So the vulnerability would be um, some kids left out of service, or the current staff stretched too thin?
Well, obviously, we would, we would cover mandated services on I U Ps, right? But then that means that then there are things that you, you, you know, that you can't do.
Okay, and when you kept saying point five, so am I correct in assuming that it is another split position or a shared position?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So you have two individuals who are social workers at Miller Driscoll right now, both are point five.
No, I have a point five.
I have the other point five.
So one person is split between the two schools.
You shared this gentleman.
Second side.
Thank you.
Oh, and I was gonna ask one more question.
Yep.
Social worker versus counselor versus psychologist, you really want it to be the social worker back versus the one point O social worker turning into something else? Is that, is that a sense of, you know what I mean, the category?
Well, I think this is, this is really um, this, this is a reduction in force.
Mm-hmm.
So this would be a social worker currently employed who would no longer be employed.
No, I, I know that, and I'm saying if it's on the list to come back.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the best way to bring a staff member back? Is that the category you need the most, social worker versus psychologist versus counselor? That's all I'm saying, in terms of they're all mental health.
Mm-hmm.
I think they, there is a skillset that they all share, but the social worker does bring some unique skills to the table.
Mm-hmm.
You know, what Kathy was saying about preschoolers and family services, when you have kids with severe disabilities, they are eligible for a wide range of services outside of school.
Okay.
And it would be nice to have somebody with some expertise in helping families to navigate that.
But whereas, yeah, no, it wasn't, it wasn't a question, I just wanted to make sure that that's where you needed it.
I didn't mean to speak for you, but I think.
You could just, it was very elegant of you to say.
Well, I'm wondering, um, so if you, so the guidance counselor serves all the students, the social worker indirectly serves all the students, but specifically works one-on-one with only children who need assistance, so.
Not necessarily one-on-one, there, there are sort of, again, there are layers, right? So there are, there are supports to the classrooms, right, for all the kids, kind of tier one.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and helping the teachers set up a classroom management system. Then there is, there are supports that they provide through SRBI, so for kids who have behavioral needs.
Mm-hmm.
So interventions. Then there are mandated services, so there are services on kids' I U Ps who are eligible for special ed, who have, you know, counseling or social work services on their I U Ps. And I know he sees kids, you know, he sees some kids individually, he sees kids in groups of two or three. Um, and again, and he'll attend those I U P meetings and all of that. And then, again, he serves as part of the mental health team.
How will those services be met, if that position is going to be?
Well, like I said, the mandated services on the I U Ps, obviously, we will meet those, they would have to be met by um, a school psychologist instead of a social worker, because we won't have one.
Okay.
Is that what you wanted to know?
That's what I wanted to know, thank you, sorry.
When did we cut, when did we cut back on the session?
We were complicated, I thought.
Can you recall, when did we do that?
Was there a second social worker?
Oh, with, did Cider do you do that too?
What year was that, when did we do that?
So, in one of the um, more recent budgets, when um, Ann Paul was here and did some reorganizing, I think there was social work, full-time social work services at the school. So Jim, uh, by example, was dedicated to the preschool and at Miller Driscoll, and I think Kathy, um, I think maybe through, or excuse me, um, Ann through attrition, reorganized and I think added a school psychologist, and just supplanted a social work position for a school psychologist, I think that might have been.
It was over five years ago, because Jim's, since I've been there, Jim's been there.
Is that right, okay.
There was a second one.
Alright.
I guess I've, I've often heard um, that the earlier we can address these issues, that they're, we're all, of the long term. Doesn't make sense to me then, having, having heard it repeatedly, that by not investing at your level, we're just looking forward to additional cost down the road. And would it make sense to invest more effort, more energy, more attention at your level? In the hopes, certainly no guarantees, but in the hopes that we would eliminate needs as we move down the road, does it, does it make sense? Because I, I, I look at your headcount and I look at the, at the, at the uh, preschool, for example, you've got, what, sixteen F T Es for fifty-four students. You know, which is less than, about three, you know, students per F T E. Uh, you know, if you do math, three point something, which seems to me, to be adequate, or like, I've got one teacher and one F T E for three, three kids at that level, maybe it isn't. So I, I, could you talk to that a little bit about the value of investing at your level now versus what the potential might be as we move forward? I, I, I know it's probably impossible to quantify it, okay, or to put a dollar amount to it, but it just strikes me that it would make sense to try and address issues and deal with issues and, and change perhaps, or improve or. As a sole, and, and, and you speak to that.
I think at any level, the, the key is to think of it um, in terms of a primary prevention model. So, if you think about it in terms of a medical model, so the job is to provide people quality intervention and quality support along the way, regardless of what level they enter, so that they can, you can prevent the crisis, right? So you wanna get people, you know, good nutrition, good understanding of exercise and all of those things, to prevent the disease, right? Um, and so, in the, in our work, our job with people with disabilities, our job with um, students, is to make sure that we get just the right amount of support to allow for kids to begin to develop independence, at developmentally appropriate levels all the way across. Um, so you want that just the right amount of support. So it's not just about always more is better, it's making sure that you're doing just the right amount of support and stretching for independence each and every time. Each and every year, what is the child going to do in first grade that they couldn't do in kindergarten independently, right? Or else you end up with an eighteen-year-old who can't do anything by themselves, right? And we want to raise adults. So, that's part of the struggle with special education, and on the mental health side, the same piece, how do we provide just enough support? We are seeing increases in students with significant anxiety, debilitating anxiety. Um, and that is manifesting itself from kinder, from preschool on, and you can see how that, how that manifests itself.
Do, do we have any idea at all what's driving that? I mean, obviously, if you sit back and accept it, but, I mean, is there any analysis, is there any, I think that tells us what is driving? How can a preschool kid or a, a, you know, grade two, one or two kid be anxious? I mean, shoot, it's one time of the time of their life. I mean, I, there's gotta be some, something that's forcing it, something that's driving it, something that's causing that, and if we don't get to that root problem, then we're gonna, it's gonna get worse, it's gonna continue to grow, I.
I think there are a number of theories as to what's happening culturally um, that drives that. In high-performing districts like Wilton, um, the expectations for children's ability to sit and attend and focus um, with lack of time for free play, with lack of time, with self-directed play, those kinds of things. There, there's a lot of theory about that playing a role. Um, our expectation for what a young child is able to do independently um, is sometimes out of whack. The amount of time kids get to self-direct play and learn to negotiate through those struggles. Um, my generation, we're having difficulty letting kids struggle at all. And so they don't learn how to struggle, they don't learn that struggle, you can make it through to the other side, because we intervene right away when, when someone's uncomfortable. So, I think there are a number of things that we as teachers do, we as parents do, that um, that doesn't allow for kids learning resilience. Learning that I can work through something, when I don't feel comfortable, when I have those butterflies in my stomach, that I can get to the other side without someone coming in to make me feel better. That I can do that myself. So I think when we think about social and emotional learning, when we think about the importance of our mental health staff now more than ever, um, we have to go back to a time that we have to teach children how to be resilient and persist through a struggle and live in the discomfort and know that it's okay.
I, I, I guess the point being, you know, I, I don't know how we can fiscally continue, and not in an adverse situation, it's in the years there, to keep throwing initial monies at this, at the, at this problem, as opposed to getting to the root of the problem, and how do we deal with that versus continuing to throw money at it? I mean, I, what do we have to do as a district, or are there things that we can do as a district? Uh, to ease some of that versus being, feeling the pressure continually throw resources at it, i.e., you know, guidance counselors or, or psychologists or whatever, whatever. That's, that's just an endless spiral.
I think no, we're.
If we don't address.
Yeah, the, I just want to say, at this point, we're just trying to maintain.
Yeah, I, I, well, I know, yeah, and, and so we will.
Right.
That we're committed to do.
Yeah.
Okay, no question about that, but how do we get to dealing with the problem? And cha, what changes do we need to make, our other changes in our scheduling and our, whatever, structure?
I, I think it's important to understand, this is not a school-based issue, you know, since last June, I've been meeting with superintendents in the region.
Oh, no, I, it's not just us, oh, I, I, I'm sure.
No, but it's, I mean.
It's a reality.
So, so it's, it's not a school-based issue, but it becomes a school-based issue, because, you know, let's say, our kids are totally well-adjusted, but they're in class with kids who are, you know, like, we have to make it work for everyone.
The only other question I have.
Well, it would seem to me to argue that you want to at least keep level funding within the mental health field.
At this point.
And, and the social worker piece probably is the role that has the most interface with families. So Glenn, that gets at a little piece of it, and some of it might be parent education. Um, and social workers probably have a better handle on a little bit of that than perhaps a counselor would.
And I think we aren't, sorry, doing things on the proactive side, so we are studying purposeful play. We um, you know, teach about the mindset for learning traits, we are doing those things. I know that the district, because I sit on the committee, as does Jen, is looking for, you know, an S E L, you know, creating an S E L curriculum and looking for programs to support that in the classroom. So I think those are the things that we're doing on the proactive side, that you would then, you know, hope that you would see some results from those.
Well, I, I'm sure, I hope so.
Glenn, you know, looking at the clock.
I know, I'm taking.
Yeah, just one more quick question.
We need to wrap up, well, why don't we ask Kathy, what, you know, in the next five minutes, what you'd like to deal us with, and what, I know you didn't get through your whole um, talk.
Alright, the only other thing I was gonna say, which was around the preschool, and again, I think, have I filled in all the info on the change of the preschool model as I've gone through this?
I don't think so.
Okay, um, so we did change the model to have a, a classroom teacher and a one point seven um, para-professional in each classroom, um, which was a big change. We did change um, the location of the preschool, so we're utilizing that core area where a lot of the kids are um, playing together. We do use the related service, again, like I said, pre K across grade two, which gives us some um, flexibility there. And I would say the other thing that we were asking for on the pre K side, and again, this goes along with the um, coaching piece, the support we have for, on the K to two side from the curriculum coordinators, was a position that would, would kind of fulfill that role for preschool. So right now, we don't have a preschool instructional coach, and we don't have a preschool curriculum coordinator. And so, we are looking at um, some different options in the area of curriculum. Um, we'd also like to, within the next couple of years, you know, get N I A C accreditation, so, I mean, we have our, we have the bar set high for preschool. Um, but we were also asking for some support in that area, um, like I said, because we have that on the K to two side, but not on the preschool side.
That's not. National Association for Education, no joke.
You have to bear with me since I'm new.
I just wanna point out that that change in the staffing ratios at preschool is, represents a significant change.
Huge change.
It's huge.
A number of the kids in the preschool started with one-to-one paras, and those one-to-one paras, for the most part, followed them all the way through high school. So, starting this whole group off with a more um, independence type of mindset.
Will make a huge difference, kind of.
Financially, yes, yes.
Absolutely.
And we need to be sure that we highlight this when we speak to the public.
Absolutely, they've been doing a huge amount of work.
That this is a tremendous change in the way we manage this, so.
Last week we had a preschool.
I also think it needs to be said in that, that this, that that change had nothing to do with the budget.
That's right.
It was what was right for kids.
That the focus on helping students become incre, students with more significant disabilities, become increasingly independent, is about helping to grow them as young adults. You, you can't have a, a para-professional by your side until you're twenty-one, and then expect on the day you turn twenty-two to all of a sudden not need help. Because you teach helplessness that way. So the job now is really starting at three, when that child turns three, how do we plan for and teach independent skills all the way through the continuum? But I, I just wanted to be clear that it, it's not about, it'll have a positive fiscal impact.
Yes.
But the greater impact is on the independence of our young people with more significant needs.
Is there any way of, going back to budget, unfortunately, or, but that's the purpose today, is to um, kind of play that out a little bit? Because when you look at Miller, Driscoll, and Cider Mill, number of para-professionals, it's large, and I think I had said, having a question about that. You know, to what extent is that I U Ps, to what extent are those one-to-one, to what extent is that scheduling, yada, yada, yada? And I know that there has been some decrease in, in recent years, which is great. But if the model is changing for good educational reasons, how does that, is there an extrapolation that you could do? Is that reasonable or unreasonable? Because you can't ever necessarily have no one-to-one aids depending on the, the child.
Right.
So that's kind of a balancing act, but I do think as a board of education, as we invest in personnel, and if it's going to turn out that we need fewer intense paras as time goes by, if you could play that out a little bit for us, because right now, you look at the budget and you go, how many paras was that again? I can't count that high. So, um, and, and I'm not saying that it's not for good reasons, but I'm just trying to say that, set some expectations that are somewhat reasonable, and also, you know, talk to how they're deployed now and, and why we need it that way.
I also wanna say that um, we do have far fewer paras in the preschool, um, but we are investing also a lot in the training of those paras.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we have a B C B A who works in that program, um, and across, you know, my, my whole school, um, but who's doing some very specific training. So there is a, there's something called a registered behavior technician training that's done through C E S, the paras won't have that certification, but they are getting a very comparable training. So again, we're, we're investing a lot even in, you know, a smaller number of paras, but paras who are, you know, highly trained to be able to support kids in the classroom. And we are doing a lot of things, um, we're piloting um, something called C T dots, which is an observation um, and assessment system. Um, that, the, the state is field testing, and that involves the paras as well as the teachers, as well as the parents. Um, we're looking at also our evaluation model um, for preschool, um, and where we actually do those um, standardized evaluations as a school district for the kiddos who are coming out of birth at three, and we need to make some changes there too. So, just so you know, there's a, in case you haven't gotten it, there's a lot going on.
Preschool.
So, I know I went way over my time.
I, and I just have one question, I, only because um, the, I know you're investing a lot in the training and um, but. the, I know you're investing a lot into the training and, um, but $80,000, if, if there was a chance that we could maybe bring the social worker back, is there a way you can look at some of the training, maybe for the classroom teachers, that can be held off for a year? Or, I mean, is there a way we can kind of like, look at those numbers and say, well, this needs to be done this year, but actually some of this information we can pass on the following year, so that the numbers come out of the budget?
I think we could look at the science piece. I think another big chunk of that, and I think Chuck will talk about it, probably when he talks about the curriculum piece, which is a possible, um, is the work with Teachers College Reading and Writing Project and becoming a project school. Um, so a big chunk of the money in the training, in my training budget, is that. Um, we also put in some money for responsive, uh, responsive classroom training. So depending upon what social, emotional curriculum the, um, the district adopts, um, whether that would be a supplement to that. I also feel strongly that, and I put this in my budget for this year, that the teachers also need to have some choice. So there's a lot that we provide to them in district, but some of them have areas that they really want to go out and get their own professional learning. And so this year, I gave them a small, trust me, a small amount of money each and said, you know, if you, there's something that you would like to pursue or even, I mean, there's so many webinars now that are great because you don't even have to leave the district. Um, but I think that that's a great way to differentiate the professional learning for the teachers as well. So that's why my number.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's obvious. There's so many pieces of this puzzle.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Sitting all together and, um, it's not a perfect floor, but, you know.
It's pretty perfect over at Miller Driscoll.
It sounds like it's pretty. Jen?
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Thank you for coming up today.
Sure. Um, these are drafts, so I'm gonna hand them to you just for like visuals, but I did just write in draft on them just because, um, they weren't shared ahead of time and what have you. So I'll kind of pass those off. Um, so, most of you know, this is our fifth, my fifth year here at, um, at Cider Mill. And so, just wanted to talk through some of my priorities and our priorities. Um, you'll hear a through line, which is kind of nice from all of our schools, just even listening to Kathy go ahead of me. And, um, but up at the top here, you'll see that these three, um, first three priorities have really kind of been the mainstay for my five years here in Wilton. Um, the first being a safe and healthy school climate for students and staff. And I'll kind of get over, uh, go over the organization of this document. Um, professional capital, um, in building teacher effectiveness has been, um, one of my greatest priorities. Investing in that through coaching, um, did a lot of work, um, reorganizing our schedule for collaboration time, which to me, the combination of coaching and collaboration time for teachers, I will tell you hands down, has been the number one improvement that I was able to make for this school. And that's important because I'm gonna go over my timeline of my five years and show, just paint a visual picture of how my five years might be different than maybe some of us who haven't been here as long. Um, obviously academic success for all students. We've been heavily invested in curriculum, assessment, instruction, and all components of that. And, um, just looking down below, you can see our mission statement. Um, my first year was spent doing a lot of listening. Um, and then, you know, one of the shifts that we needed to make was really for all students and have spent a lot of time and energies looking across all of our student populations. Students, um, gen ed students, students with special needs, students who have ELL, students who have anxiety and some mental health issues, but really working to ensure that all of our students were getting what they needed. If you look at the, um, the visuals that I have here for you, um, the left one, which starts with the Wilton Public Schools vision and theories of action, it kind of takes you from the district's vision all the way down to the school strategic objectives. And you can, you can see this is my latest iteration of my school improvement plan. But I have been pretty consistent on growing this vision throughout the years so that we've been tweaking it, but trying to main, maintain a focus and making adjustments and shifts as the district has had to change their priorities. To the right of it, um, I just threw in another little, um, visual that I'd had for, you know, another, um, document. But just to show you a little bit about the coaching work, um, the, um, the IETs and the protocols that we're using, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, but I would invite you guys into our schools. I don't think there's really a sense for me to convey the work that happens in our schools without being in our schools. The work that these IETs and the work that the coaches are doing is, um, hands down, the, um, it's, research has shown, and you can see it in action, that it is the best form of, um, professional learning or professional development. Um, so with that, um, I'll move you down to the first page. We have our three theories of action. Um, you'll see the first one. I'm not gonna read them, but the first one gets to having a healthy, safe school, um, climate. And that has absolutely been a priority for us. We, I want to say about three years ago, we really started heavy work with Bill Preble and really formed our, um, Helping Hands Group and our adult design team to really guide all of that work and use that data and have really, um, put in some, um, strategic improvements in that area. The second one is, um, something that we as a district have agreed upon, which is using the IET or collaborative decision-making process to really focus in and improve, um, instruction. Um, and again, I'll go through, um, the financial, uh, pieces of that, but I am very lucky to have two 45-minute, um, collaborative times built into my schedule, which I was able to work in collaboratively, um, creatively, I should say, a few years ago. Collaboratively with my friends. Um, and then the third one, um, is just a, um, Cider Mill where we're really trying to focus on, um, communication. So the next, um, page gets you to a little bit more of the heart of, um, the budget process after I kind of set the tone here. So I laid this out in kind of a timeline and, um, honestly, this has been an interesting process. And I kind of label, um, the first three years that I was here, Building Excellence, because I will tell you that I was able to make all of the positive changes in my first years here. Um, when, when I really sat down to think about my timeline here, my, the difference between this projected sixth year, my fifth year, and last year, my fourth year, is drastically different in regard to what I was able to put on the table as a building needle, leader for school improvement. And so I think this timeline can actually help, um, help see that. So I really clumped the first three years together. Um, you know, I was able to, without a lot of increases, I'm not gonna say that, um, I added a lot of staff. I really was able to take what I had and use efficiencies in regard to scheduling. Um, there was some enrollment decline and I was able to shift some class size, create some larger class size in fourth and fifth grade and do some creative, um, staffing. And I won't go into all of the details, but without adding a whole bunch of staffing, um, I was able to do quite a few things. I was able to create IETs by adding a little bit of FTE in the special areas. At the same time, I was able to do that for anybody who's been in Wilton. There's been lots of conversation about the arts and the uneven amount of instructional time in, say, um, vocal arts and, um, more.
Visual arts.
Visual arts, thank you. And so I was able to equalize the amount of time for art and music in our school. It's a little simpler. Um, I was able to create a flex schedule for our LLC. Um, right now, the digital world belongs in the classroom, not up in a separate room. And so that has been a driving priority for me, is not only working on creating and growing this physical space of the LLC, which I will tell you has not really been budget-driven. I have gone to our wonderful WEF and has been, I have been funded through the WEF, through our P, my PTA. I want to say they've granted me almost $20,000 every year. And so that is how I've grown the physical space. It has not been through our budget. Um, you know, I think there's a little bit of angst around the PTA funding, things like that. So at some point, I'm not sure how long that's going to continue because truly that should be a, um, in my mind, a budgetary, um, district budget responsibility. But, um, also with that comes the need to have our technology integrated into the classroom. You know, they cannot go to the library to get technology. It has to be brought in the classroom where the core instruction is happening. So I've been able to do a lot with creating a flexible schedule for our LLC and integrating, um, the curriculum in the classroom. We were able to work creatively with our schedule and carve out a win block, which is the what I need block, which is, um, a little bit of enrichment and we were able to optimize. If you can imagine, if you have, um, in our, you all know how our, our, our school is set up, right? So you either have four or three sections at every grade level in every house and you kind of get pigeonholed. It's not easy to schedule because no matter what, it's not the same all the time. So there are, every once in a while, you'll have a team of three instead of a team of four and you'll have a spec, a random special area person who has a block of time, right? So we were able to very creatively maneuver our schedule. So during that, their, their block of time where there, there was only a team of three, say, they are now teaching the win block and we're using the Rinzelli learning program to provide enrichment where we're using the weird staffing model that we have and have optimized our, um, special area staff to provide enrichment while other students are going to invention, uh, intervention, excuse me. And the classroom teachers have probably about 15 to 18 students in the classroom and they're able to provide more focused tier one instruction for, for some learners. So we've really been able to focus and target learning through that. We've been able to build up, um, our coaching. We were able to add a math coach. The district had a priority to do that. We were able to add an interventionist. And again, that was at the district level, but I know through that, and you can ask Chuck more, but we did that a lot through changes in enrollment. There wasn't an increase per se on the, um, on the overall. I was able to add world language for third grade. Um, again, not through an addition of staffing. We did a lot of creative, um, scheduling and were able to add it in third grade. Um, and we were also able to add, um, enrichment clubs. So I, I think, um, we did a lot of restructuring and, um, on the house-based model. I did a little, I don't know if you guys are aware of Project Evolve, where you trade in paras for, um, certified teachers. It's my belief that it's best to have the certified teacher in, in front of children. Um, paras are wonderful. They are an amazing support, but they are to reteach, redirect. They are not responsible for instruction. So we did, we created a house-based model where we have, um, reading interventionists and special ed staff kind of wrapped around a house rather than having people coming at students, um, all over, which is what it was like when I got there. And to me, that was the, the students who have struggling, um, who struggle with learning in any way need the most cohesive instruction. And so we really worked, um, to do that. Then you can see as we, any questions kind of what the improvements were made the first kind of three years? Just up, up at the top. I'm really just going through that to kind of paint a picture of where, where we are now. Um, so then we get to 16, 17 and we started to see, um, some, some losses or inability to add based on what I believed was right for program improvement. At that point, um, we were really wanting to, as a district, to add math interventionists or math coaches. The, there's a discrepancy between the number of, um, literacy or humanities coaches. I have two. I have one math coach. Um, I have four FTEs for reading interventionists. I have one for a math interventionist. So every year, we've really looked at that as a possibility of adding that position and have not been able to move forward with that. Um, I, I lost a tech integrator.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
That was actually one of the questions I had, yeah. Was the intervention levels? Um, and do you have sort of enrollment, not, not, yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Student-served numbers about, you know, like why the discrepancy, so many reading, not so many math? Is it just staffing or is it based on need?
It's based on staffing. Um, so I know that, um, you know, we have a very systematic process for SRVI. We go through these huge, uh, uh, in, in addition to the regular progress monitoring we use, we hold, do whole school, um, review of the math data and triangulate with, um, other performance data. But, um, we in literacy were able to take students that are up to the 60th percentile, which we've determined at the district level is what we look at, um, to determine whether or not they're in need of an intervention. They may or may not be, based on other data, but that's kind of like our, our cut point to look at students. Um, in the math, I mean, we're lucky if we can, um, really look at students who fall in the 40th percentile. So there's a drastic difference in the number of students who can be seen.
All right. Well, because, um, in prior discussion, discussions prior to the budget, had nothing to do with the budget. I wasn't actually even on the board, but I had heard, um, some talk about the need for more math intervention. So just some numbers about how many kids and.
You know, and I will say, it's not an either-or, um, that, you know, we've made a, you know, and it's my belief that the first priority is you need to read, right? Um, because our, our math program is very much language-based. And so a lot of times, students who are falling below in math, it's not just because of their mathematical, um, skills. It's also because of language, yeah.
No, 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 don't, don't mistake my question. I'm not saying.
No, I know. I'm just. I'm throwing that out there. Then I'm not, I'm not just, just being clear.
I'm actually trying to get at Glenn's piece because this is where it actually does, to me, make the most sense to put early intervention on a consistent level. And it seems like if we're lacking in math, that that's a poor, um, I don't know, poor isn't the right word. It could create bigger problems later, that's all. It's just harder to catch them up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't thinking.
Jen, did I hear you somewhere plus? That, um, for reading.
Yes.
Were able to offer intervention to kids starting at 60th percentile?
It ends up usually being the 50th. We just start looking at them at the 60th percentile, which is very different than who we can even consider at, in the math, just because of the number of students.
Forty percent.
And that's what we look at.
If we can get to the 40.
If we can get to that, I'll tell you, a lot of times, I, I'm not able to service them.
And I would say, just in terms of caseload, they're seeing between 25 to 35 kids per interventionist.
And it fluctu, it fluctuates based on.
So is that a percentage of the population? Is that like?
You have a thousand kids.
Yeah.
Four people seeing 30 kids, maybe 10% of the kids.
Right, okay. So that would make sense to me, that 80% gets done in the classroom.
Some are double-dipping, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, true.
Right, 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 okay.
And math and reading.
Yeah, yeah. So i- if you have time, it just might help the board just to see a little bit of numbers around that.
Sure.
We could certainly give you the kids who are not able to see in math.
Yeah, well, that's my point. Like, how many are at the 40th, 50th percentile and what those numbers tell you.
The kids who are in the 40th percentile in math, are these kids not in, um, they, they aren't getting special services? These are just the mainstream kids that are.
To be clear, yes, these are students who are just, I'm just talking about interventionists. Now, we do, you know, we, um, with special services and intervention, there's, you know, there's no, it's gray, right? We try to make sure that we're servicing, we prioritize, um, students with special needs with our special ed staff and obviously the interventionists with gen ed, but we also try to think flexibly in regard, you know, fiscally. Because if there are students with like needs, there's no reason to have two different people doing the same thing just because one happens to be identified as special and the other is not. So we do a lot of collaboration, um, to make sure that we're maximizing our staffing. Otherwise, we'd never be able to, um, meet the various needs, so.
So your budget request is for one math interventionist?
I didn't, no, it didn't even.
They have one.
We have one.
They have one, but it's keeping.
Yeah.
Level funding.
So you're, you're not asking. So I, I'm, you'll see inability to add. So when you get to 2016, I did, my, I didn't know how else to write it, but.
No, it's, it's a negative.
So, well, I think. I didn't write negative because like, it didn't even exist.
But you don't, you don't, you don't have a math interventionist.
I have one.
She does, one.
So that was added up in the building years of excellence.
They moved it to a different line.
It's not in the math budget. There's now an interventionist, um, academic intervention as well.
Oh, they created a new line. I'm sorry.
A different line.
What was the name of that line? I don't.
1209?
Well, there's 1209, 1123 is math interventionist, which is this year. So then last year was 1209, 1111, where it was before? Cause now there's none there.
I, I could tell you that I'm, I'm maintaining staffing from a 1.0. Last year, going forward with a 1.0 this year. And it is not in the budget.
It's, uh, they were in the subject area, so we put them.
It went from 1110 to, uh, 1123.
1123, yeah, so it's false.
Debbie's, um, question about, how much does it cost? We have to pull from different places to figure out the cost. We figured if we put it all in one class center, you get a better sense of what the intervention program costs.
And intervention program has been building. I mean, it wasn't.
Yes.
I mean, I remember when.
Absolutely.
We hired the reading coaches because reading was, and so I think the idea was always we'd be adding as we went. And we kind of got stalled.
We kind of got stalled.
So we had hired at Miller Driscoll and Cider Mill, these reading interventionists, and then we went adding.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
No, no, I totally understand. I can, I can see that it's been building. It's just, there seems to be. It's just, there seems to be.
But that's why.
The math is.
Yeah, exactly.
The ideal.
I, I was, I don't know if this is complicating things, but I was just trying to paint a picture because sometimes you guys don't even know what we're, we would like to do. So I'm just trying to paint a picture of.
But you're, I think you're pointing out things we wish we would have liked to.
But also the same. But we're also, when we're sitting here making decisions and we know we're trying to come in at two point oh, right? Then these are decisions we have to make.
But math intervention isn't fluff, you know what I mean?
Oh, it's not fluff, but I would say, there's not a lot on here that's fluff. I guess that's my.
Yeah, it seems like we're not adding a math interventionist. Well, it just seems like if you're gonna offer a service like intervention, then we need to do it. We need to, we need to staff it correctly.
Right.
That's a little different than moving into a different, a different service that doesn't exist yet that we may also need.
Right.
But we haven't done it yet.
Right.
Right. So if that's sort of a distinction, that's all. So I'm just saying, if we're gonna do intervention, we might as well do it right.
Yeah, and we've talked about it at any number of board meetings, about the need for math intervention. And we just keep picking the can down the road. And sooner or later, we've just gotta man up and do it, make a commitment and get it done. And I'm just so frustrated that, there's been meeting after meeting, we've talked about it and.
So math achievement lags, but I think it's also important to understand that, you know, since Chuck arrived, since I've arrived, since, I mean, looking around the table, everybody is new within the last five years. And we did not have an articulated.
For us, we've been here forever.
I'm new, I moved here five years ago.
Right, but you don't know what you don't know. But so I guess my response to that, Glenn, is simply this. Number one, we, we're shifting instructional practice in math and we're still aligning our metrics around that. And then number two, SRBI is still, in my opinion, in its nascent form. And so now we have a, um, a, a way to capture metrics and we're refining the process. But I would think it would be irresponsible to come forward with a set of needs for staffing when we haven't really figured out the model entirely. So, so I don't disagree that the support's not necessary. I, I just think, you know, there's an attempt on the part of the administration and the previous administration to be prudent. That, you know, that's all.
I, I respect that, you know, because it's been the charge teaching everyone to be prudent.
Yeah, we had this discussion when you presented your, your scorecard. We, we just, oh my god, we need more, we need more, but you said, I don't know if I need more.
Right, but at the same time, we've been, I've been on the board for six years and been hearing about SRBI for six years. So how, is that the holdup? Is it getting, how do we get SRBI out of the nascent period because?
Well, I think, I mean, you know, Chuck, these guys can speak to it more personally than I can today, but I, I think we're absolutely moving. And, you know, in fact, the last year, we had, we saw it in the Sback scores, in fact. The kids who received that targeted intervention moved.
In all of them.
Much more quickly than, than kids in the mainstream program.
I think when we first put the math interventionist into place, we wanted to start with one and to see whether or not we would see an impact. And we are seeing an impact. It's just under current fiscal constraints, we've had to make choices and math intervention was not one of, you know, it's very little that we can pull forward.
Talking about cutting mental health, to be adding.
No, no.
Do you know what I'm saying? But that's just to try to paint a picture of what, these are the choices. There's no fluff to be dealing with. Like, these are the choices we're, you know, we're not able to add. So I'm just, that's why I'm just taking you guys through this.
Okay, why don't you?
Um, so, um, one of the things that we started doing last year, and again, this, I, I think to, to reiterate what Andrea said, well, this, this has nothing to do with budgetary reasons, but we started going through a process with Ms. Sharon over there, really looking at, um, how to best service our students. Um, we, in this district, rely very heavily on our wonderful paraprofessionals. And at some point, it, it does become a disservice to our students. We're not teaching them the independent skills. The issue that I'm seeing though is that, you know, you have on one hand, um, a legal IEP which states that a given student has this much service. And over time, if you look, Cider Mill has taken a significant cut and I can get you the exact numbers of paras. We had a huge reduction a couple of years ago. We had most of the part-time staff and they were cut and not replaced. And so I cut the year before because I did the Project Evolve and I had just tightened things up and everything. And so as things got cut, more increased, um, students with needs come in and we're working on being more needs-based in our services. But there's been a history here where the number of paras you have in a building is the number of paras you have and you make do with who you have regardless of what the IEP needs are. So right now, we're kind of in a place where there's a little bit of a disconnect with what our IEPs are stating and probably what's in the best interest of students. But right now, I'm going into a year where I'm a little bit worried because what I'm requesting based on IEPs, and there's going to be lots of shifts and change, I'm hoping throughout the rest of this year, because of all of our wonderful work with Ms. D'Angelo and our, um, and our special ed teachers making right choices for kids, that right now, there's a little bit of a disconnect because we were not able to add the staffing um, that we needed, um, for what I see right now. I'm very hopeful, but I just want to point out that there's a pretty large disconnect between what I need on paper right now and what, um, is going to be supported. And again, a big difference is probably what's on paper and what is right for kids. And, you know, unfortunately, something like that doesn't happen overnight, right? Um, working towards building the kids' independence and shifting legally mandated services takes a long time. And we are working on it very hard because it's right for kids. But I'm a little nervous about, um, being able to appropriately staff. And I'll, I'll know more when we end up, um, this year. So there's that, that kind of gets.
All right, so to translate, cause I'm, I'm just trying to. Are, are you saying that what's in kids' IEPs?
Yeah.
And the staffing you have in paras may not be a match?
What is, looks to be allocated to me this year, correct?
Okay, all right. Even though to an outsider, me, looking at the numbers of paras is very large.
Correct.
And I, and again, that's not a criticism, it's just, it's already big.
It's work that, I think Andrea said it the best, is this is work the district has been really looking at. And I would say for the, we really started making some moves on that, on this last year. Um, there are probably, for some students, disproportional, um, amounts of services on IEPs. And we are working to.
But that, you have to go through the IEP process.
It's a whole, you know what that takes. It's not like you do, so.
All right, so some of it's in the current IEPs.
Correct.
Another piece that hasn't hit Cider Mill yet is the model of more independence earlier.
Correct. Yes.
And then another thing that's kind of floating in the back of my mind is the DMC report.
Right.
Which talked about, you know, perhaps you do need more reading teachers or math teachers or science teachers. Can you trade paras for, trade, I guess, maybe that is the right word, I don't know.
Project Evolve.
You know, like, you know, just change the category of, of FTEs that are disturbing. So I, and I think it sounds like we're in a huge transition period. And so to the extent that you can help us understand that, or say in three to five years, maybe we'll go down ten percent or, you know, whatever. I mean, just some model that would.
We're starting with.
That would just assure us that we're in Glenn's, we don't, you know, we don't have heart failure, that, oh my god, you keep adding, you know, whatever. That, I don't agree with you.
I mean, we're, we're creating significant independence plans for our students. Um, you know, and again, not because of, it, it is a hard thing to talk about because it's in light of the budget conversation, but it's also right for kids. And so they're kind of getting mixed up right now.
No, I, I think Andrea's point is right centered, that if you're gonna start early and you're gonna start with a different model that says we're not gonna attach somebody to your shoulder and hope for the best, I get that. I think that's wonderful. And I think that all parents and all budget people and all educators can support that. And it may have a budget impact as we go forward.
Yes.
The other part about my para question that you may have seen was, to what extent do paras avoid, help us avoid outplacements? Or do they? Maybe they don't. You know, and that's just a question not to answer today, but I'm just wondering, is there any, again, because it is a large number. Is it in some ways saving us on some kids?
I mean, I would say.
Or maybe not.
I would say student, the team helps us to minimize outplacement. I don't think it's any given person. I think it's a combination of who's working with that child. So that's what worries me when we talk about cutting, cutting mental health. When we look at, because all of those, um, staff people wrap around a child and put in supports to help maintain their success in, um, in our schools. I mean, I will say that was one of the concerns that I have, is if we make too many changes too fast with the levels of services, that we will not be able to meet the needs of these students and we will have an increase of, um, outplacement.
Can I jump on your sentence just because this, the. I won't have to replay this part of the conversation when we get to me, that Kathy and her staff have been doing yeoman's work and we do philosophically believe doing right by children to start with that independence. Conversely, those kids who have been in the program for a long time, not under that practice, uh, we have to be aware of if we have created some learned helplessness, that we can't drop the level of service too rapidly. And so I think that, I think that that goes without saying to probably the people at the table, but I think it's worth highlighting that, um, changing, uh, starting with a more independent-focused model, um, those kids are never, aren't going to experience sort of like a loss or a change. Whereas we want to be sensitive to rolling back the supports at an appropriate pace that we stay in there.
That's why I said, you know, like to what extent, like if it starts at pre-K, how long will it take?
And we can't wait. Our intent isn't to wait.
No, no, I know that.
Right, we're still doing.
Well, to what you can, but.
Right.
We still have a lot of kids in the system who have it.
Exactly, that we need time to, to progress, so.
You can't pull the rug.
Yes. Um, so I thought I had put it on here. The other thing that I'm, I'm concerned with, and I, I don't know if Chuck, you mentioned this, but, um, what else, uh, and I think it was on one of the tiers, I forgot my PowerPoint, but the ELL, um, position? We have had an unbelievable increase of, um, so if you want to just jot that down on, on the notes here, I should have put that on here. I would say I started talking to you about that last year and it wasn't put in. And it absolutely, um, you know, there's a, she's got a caseload of over thirty-three something kids in four different schools. It's unreasonable to think that these students are getting what they need. It's a wonderful thing that we're becoming a diverse, uh, community. We have, um, wonderful families that are joining our, um, communities, but, uh, we are not able to, uh, meet their needs the way we should be. I.
Wow.
A lot.
Oh.
Like ten?
Oh, no.
Terrible, terrible.
Oh, it's more than that.
What I think is significant about the ELL population, I mean, the numbers have increased, but the needs have increased. We have a family from Syria and the needs are not just ELL. I mean, these are students who lost school for a number of years, who have witnessed traumatic events. So it's not just numbers, it's the needs of those particular kids.
I think the other hidden thing there is that, um, as our population, uh, needs more modification as ELLs, then our teachers also need some development and coaching from an ELL instructor. And when our ELL instructor is spread so thin, it's difficult for her to sort of be a reflective partner or a coach to our teachers and how to modify successfully, um, for those kids.
Are there any?
We only have one.
Mm-hmm.
And a, and a contract.
I do contract with somebody, um, part-time because we can't meet the needs of everybody, but that's only a kind of a band-aid.
Are there, um, I think one of my questions was assessments, you know, like.
The loss links, yeah.
Whatever, yeah, whatever, they, they keep changing it. But are, are kids making progress or is there a benchmark within a certain amount of time? And if there's some data you could.
Absolutely, I've been gathering that and I have that information for you.
Um, are there any federal resources available for that? To, for reimbursement of that?
I'm sorry?
I mean, I know it's not safe to say this question, but, um, are there any federal resources available for ELL?
Not, we do get a grant, but it's, I think, around professional learning.
It's Title II.
Isn't that correct, Kevin?
It's Title II.
Title III.
Title II is professional learning.
Okay, so Title III is for ELL. I believe it is devoted primarily to professional learning as well, but I could double check on that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, regardless.
It's insufficient funding today.
Given the economic community.
That's why it's all professional learning.
How many kids, district wide, do we have in need of ELL services?
So there's thirty-three identified, uh, and this is something we're.
But that's not all tenth graders who need the same thing.
Kids who are.
Okay, from twelve with ten plus different.
I actually have been preparing something for you, which I can share in my budget presentation that I think will give you a better picture of what our ELL needs.
Thank you, thank you. Um, all right, so just, I'll just summarize this year here. So basically, um, I had also hoped to have, um, going into this budget season, an additional, um, special ed teacher because the number of students who are in what we call the cohort, who have more significant special needs, I have another full group. And I, that didn't even go into the, um, the budget, um, as well. So we're gonna have to do a lot of restructuring and increasing our caseloads and, and all that, trying to figure out how to assume, um, another cohort without getting the, the staffing. So again, we already talked about the social work, I'm not gonna talk about that. Um, and then the bottom three points are just, I want, I put those on, which, so it's the loss of enrichment, the loss of special area instructional time and world language instructional time because I just wanted to put that down there, that if we go lower, this is kind of like where we are. There's nothing left to like take away.
Are, are these, are these here?
This, this didn't happen.
In any.
No, I said possible.
In priority order, are these here in all?
Um, no, they're just kind of like, so we've been, you know, when we have our budget conversations, we knew we were coming in maybe even a little too high for the Board of Finance, right? So it is very worrisome to me to hear that, like, we're worried about getting it through this group here. But the reality is, if we go lower, we will have a, we will have an impact on what we're able to provide as a public education for students.
You're saying if you go lower, you're gonna possibly lose some of the win blocks.
Exactly, so we would lose enrichment that I just, so when you look at what I was able to put in in my first few years, we're now starting to take away all of the, the work to create what I would consider a really graceful.
Would it be possible, or could you take some time and, and give us a priority of the scene of what you think? And I, I have to comment, but all of you, I, I think you've done a phenomenal job recognizing the reality of where we are financially. But the, the other reality is, what do we really want to do?
Right.
And so could, could you, in a priority order, this is the most important thing I need. This is the second most important thing. And, and evaluation, which is for us to deserve, not unlike what Kevin did with his tier structure.
Well, I, I also, to build on that, I, I would still need to know though, we have a list of tier needs and we're hearing.
Maybe we can work on that tier.
Slightly, you know, a little bit different. Um, and does that cause, given our questions, does that cause you all to rethink? Or us to rethink? You know, just, just help, give us some guidance. We would have six different opinions on where the priority should be. We kind of need maybe a coherent voice.
Yeah, I think, you know, Jen's, um, summary sheet was important here because it also, it, it reflects the cumulative choices that have been made over a series of years. And I, so.
And, and we've talked about that. You, you just can't go year over year, over year, like what we have in the past forty years.
So that's what I was trying to make.
Right. You know, we eliminated third, we added third grade world language and we took it away and it's back. And it's back, you know, it's on the chopping floor.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, like there's, there's nothing to.
You did a great job adding ability. And I think we all know families who have lost the world schools because their kids aren't getting, their gifted students aren't getting what they need and those are arguably, you know, some of our top, could be some of our top students. Which will, which I propose to make world schools look more tougher. Anyways, we, we have to move on.
Yep, that was it.
I don't think it was really there to make the board a bad chairman, like timekeeper. I just wanted to get my last.
Comes with the title curse.
Just as a point of clarification, so we have these workshops scheduled over the next three days and then we have our, our regular workshops that are in the evening as part of the board. So we'll have a, as you guys are, cause I mean, I was very clear that we're not in the numbers here.
Yeah.
And, but we'll have a chance to.
Tendons ducking over there.
To dive into the numbers. So, just so if you're worried about time and information.
That's important.
We've got additional bites of the apple, for sure.
And especially once we get the information that we request him back.
So I'm gonna, for sake of brevity, not do a lot of prepess, because I actually think there's so much of a through line that, philosophically, this is all gonna align. And if you don't see a through line, please stop me. Um, I handle being interrupted very well. So I thought that I might just, for speed's sake, take you through what we have. And sort of the levels of cuts, um, that came through central office, things that never made it out of Middlebrook that I cut, and things that we, um, didn't even ask for because we understood the budget environment that we were in. That's okay with you?
That's great, thank you.
So, um, Middlebrook came in extremely lean. Uh, we were very, very, um, modest, I think, in what we asked, um, going forward. So what we have is a fully teamed middle school. We no longer have extended teams, so we have nine teams teaching, um, um, a full, a full load of the core. What we added, so we, we have one coach for humanities. We also have a coaching position for, um, math and science. Our coaching position for math and science was actually vacant for the beginning of this year. We are transitioning, um, a teacher into that role on an interim basis for the remainder of the year. That was just about finding a perfect candidate. We're not willing to settle. We want somebody who can really, um, make the most of what the coaching model is. Because we know that improving classroom instruction is the way that we are going to not only improve kids' experiences as learners, but also, um, see that reflection in their assessment performance, um, on our standardized testing. So, um, we have, the coaching model is something that we place a lot of value on. Um, while Middlebrook teachers, um, do collaborate as a team, um, they have their team meeting daily. We really historically hadn't had time for them to collaborate with their job-alike peers, those instructional effectiveness teams that we, that you're hearing about at every building. So we did restructure the Middlebrook, um, schedule this year so that all of our core, um, subjects have one, uh, period per week where they are with their job-alike, um, peers. And what that has been a wonderful support to is our ability to leverage our coaching time. So, um, it, that having the coaching, uh, having the coach sit in on that collaborative time is gonna build towards greater consistency across the three teams. And help us tighten it on our sort of philosophical bent. Um, we are very much in a state of flux with the way, our, the model of, um, our instruction in a lot of our disciplines. We're really shifting over multiple departments, shifting to a more constructivist approach. Um, and so I think it's something that, um, our kids and our teachers sort of see the through line of where we're going. But there, um, my staff is in a very much a generative stage. They're writing units, they're teaching units for the first time. So, some of my departments describe themselves as being in year two of year one, where they're tweaking units so significantly. So that teacher buy-in and that teacher, um, they don't have individual autonomy in terms of how their program is developing, but having that group of three, for the most part, in, in, uh, three job-alike, um, teachers, working with a coach or a coordinator to really, um, steer how their program is evolving. So one of the things that we added this year that we were able to do without any cost impact was, we shifted one of the team meetings. So Monday, we'd, instead of having team meetings, we have instructional effectiveness team time. Um, and so that is definitely, uh, something we're trying to have at every building. Um, the other thing that, the sort of one really innovative thing that we added, um, since last year, was, um, a course that we call AIM. It's additional instruction in math. Um, our math scores reflect accurately that we have, are struggling with meeting well kids' needs in math. We do have one math interventionist. We absolutely have more than enough need to keep a second math interventionist busy. I don't want anybody to mistake AIM for math intervention, because they actually serve two different functions. We would love, in, in an ideal world, research tells us that having at least sixty minutes a day of math instruction is best. Our teachers, of course, each of our core subject areas all have the same amount of time. On a great day, it's forty-two minutes. Um, and anytime we need to flex the schedule, that actually constrains, it gets constrained. So, um, AIM is, is an additional, um, math class. Uh, most of our kids who are in AIM take four additional periods, um, per six-day cycle. So AIM students take, um, a full grade-level math on-team. Um, they do their math assessment on-team. They also can get extra help from their on-team math teacher. In addition to that, by dropping some of their stride blocks, so dropping, um, either some art music or dropping, um, some of the other side of stride, um, which is, uh, family consumer science, um, I-STEM and, um, health class. We can, um, give them addition, four additional math classes a week. Um, and that is being taught by, um, uh, actually the math teacher who used to be our, um, math-science coach. So a teacher who really intimately knows the way that math is being taught in all of those classrooms. So her job is really to, um, teach out ahead of the grade-level curriculum, knowing where our kids typically are getting stuck. She activates their prior knowledge, she does some assessment, understand where the gaps are in their foundational learning, and she tries to teach into those gaps. So her job really is to make sure that when the children are sitting in their on-grade-level math class, that they're actually primed and ready to receive what's going on. Because we know that some of our kids where there were foundational gaps historically, stuff was just blowing right by them. Or the teacher was having to slow down instruction for all students in order to sort of catch those students up. So, um, the AIM program was in addition to the Middlebrook, um, course, uh, since the, this past year. So we, this is our first year with AIM. We have, um, thirteen kids who are on deck to move into that program right now, so we'll be at a hundred and seven probably within about a week. So that goes across, um, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Um, we do, the, we built AIM schedule, um, that teacher, um, actually works additional hour, well, she, uh, her workday flexes, so that she actually teaches one of her blocks each day outside of school hours. So there are, um, before and after-school hours specifically for AIM kids to come in, so that, that's a double dip on the extra help that they can get. They can get extra help with their own math teacher or with the AIM teacher. So, um, we're looking, um, obviously it's the first time, first year we have, um, the model in place. We're gonna watch the, um, the results closely of those children and try to learn from what the results tell us about, um, ways that we can get the most growth out of that program. It's very different from SRBI math intervention because, um, AIM is tier one, so that we have up to, I think, uh, I have to look. I think we have one class of, um, twenty-three right now. Um, so we try to max that class out at twenty-four, um, but it is, it is just more tier one. So, um, it isn't, uh, special education and it is not, um, the small group foundational work. So our math interventionists start sort of at wherever the child is. So if you're working at a second grade level or if you're working at a fourth grade level, that's where the math interventionist is gonna start. AIM really is about priming the pump and helping you keep up, uh, and be successful and gain traction in grade-level math. So that was sort of our one big add, um, budget to budget. Is there anybody who has a question about that particularly?
Let me ask you a, a question of, when you take a hun, what did you say you were gonna be at? A hundred and how many students?
A hundred and seven students.
So you're gonna be a hundred and seven students who are no longer taking one or two stride classes.
Right.
So how does that affect the number of students per teacher in the stride classes? And could it potentially mean down, um, decreasing some of the staff in stride?
So the first thing that children drop, is there any tutorial that they have?
Their what?
Any tutorial, which, tutorial isn't exactly a study hall, but it's the closest correlation that people would, um, so, uh, that's the first thing that kids drop. Um, and then they're.
Which is really just a supervised type of, that's really an instruction.
Yes. So, um, like a homework helping session. Um, so there, there, there would be some small decrease in some of our, um, class sizes, but I'll tell you, I still have, um, I know I have gym classes up around twenty-four. Um, there, it's, it's, the stride schedule is so complicated and, and they are pulled up, they, they have got to have, uh, parents and students had some say in what they came out of. So, um, some kids came out of the math, uh, the music and art block and some kids came out of the quarterlies. So I think the impact that it has is actually very small, 'cause, um, like my quarterly teachers see all one thousand seven children in a year. So to drop a hundred actually out of a year is not a huge negative, is not a huge downtick, but I could get you those numbers.
Yeah, I, I'm not so concerned myself, but I think that that's a logical question that anybody from the community would ask. You know, if you're taking a hundred students away from this block of time.
Right.
Can't we reduce the teaching in that block of time?
Right. So a lot of children, it would be something like, I'm gonna drop my tutorial and I'm gonna drop my, um, general music theory, let's say. So they could still be taking, um, you know, art and, um, art in all of their quarterly classes. So, um, we certainly try, we know that our stride block is, um, sort of where a lot of our kids find their joy and have a lot of passion in what they're doing. And so we try to make sure that kids get to stay in, um, as much of the stride that they prefer. And we absolutely require that kids take at least two PE sessions a week.
Lauren, does, uh, if a student's assigned to AIM, um, does that child stay there for the whole semester, or can you sort of drop in and out?
So the plan, it, again, we're, being that we're in year one, the plan was that a child, once they got into AIM, would stay there for the year. The reason being that, um, if they have gaps, becau-, um, just because you had all the foundational knowledge you needed for unit three, doesn't necessarily mean you actually have the foundational knowledge you need for unit seven.
Right, okay.
And, um, so it's a, it's an ungraded support course. Um, there's a lot of assessment that goes on, it's formative assessment to help drive the instruction. Um, and Mrs. Linay's, you know, um, has a lot of interfacing with the math, the other teachers in the math department to sort of talk about how they, um, how they can score kids mutually.
And how are they identified?
Um, so, I, um, because of when we instituted the program, we actually got approval to run this program like the second-to-last day of school last year or something like that. Um, we ended up doing the initial, um, look based on standardized testing performance. Um, going forward, we will be able to have, um, that the primary is teaching recommendation with a cross-check of the, um, standardized test performance. But this time around, we did start with standardized test performance. As this year has gone along, teachers have been able to recommend kids in where there are, um, open seats. Um, and that has included some of our kids who do have IEPs, who are, whose math needs can be met in a general ed setting without an extra human resource. So we do have a couple of children who have math goals, even though they're, um, but their math goals are of a sort that they were still in a general ed grade-level math class.
And can you receive AIM and intervention, or is it one or the other?
So we have, we certainly have children who are in multiple interventions. Um, the, so we have kids who are in reading and in math. We have kids who are in reading and in AIM. I don't believe we have anybody who's in intervention and in AIM, because it's two very different kinds of math learning. Um, and typically our kids who are in intervention would not be ready to keep up with the pace of AIM particularly. But certainly as kids are exiting intervention, we're trying to support them with AIM as long as parents agree. And, um, our kids who are not progressing in AIM are our top candidates, um, for intervention if space is available.
Okay, good.
Like I said, we have, we have two reading interventionists and only the one math interventionist. And as our, uh, test scores show, math is certainly an area where we are, um, trying to grow our teacher skill and our student skills. So we are, um, trying to go after it on all fronts.
At the end of the year, it'll be, um, we'd love to have you come to one of our meetings and give us a, a year and assessment of AIM. How the kids did in their performance, both, um, academically and mentally, and their self-confidence with math and all of that.
One of the things that we're tracking, um, is, um, they intermittently put up, um, you know, how they feel about math as a quadrant, and we're watching how it shifts over time. Um, one of the, what, it, it's really lovely for kids to actually have the two different adults that they're working with, because when they get stuck on something, they have two sort of wells to go to in terms of explanation. Um, but there's a lot of, um, comfort in, within the, I think they, the individual children I've spoken to about AIM, um, talking, feeling like really safe and supported in the AIM classroom and that it's a place where they feel yet more, um, confident as risk takers. And so we're, they're working not only on like basic foundational math concepts, but also on that sense of agency and empowerment. I can do this, I, I can approach this, I can find a place to jump in. Um, and I think that's, that honestly is just as important as the actual foundational math skill probably, in terms of success.
So in your budget requests, you're proposing to continue with just the one, with the one in teaching?
So my budget currently has the one interventionist and the one AIM teacher.
Is it listed, does she have her own line, the AIM teacher?
Where, where is AIM in what in line item?
Probably in the math.
I would think so.
Yeah.
One, 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 one.
One, 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 oh. So she's one of the ten, or the nine, nine point four? Okay.
No.
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 No, she's, like, two in the original.
There would be, is it two, two math interventionists listed in the budget, and so she's in, she's listed first?
Put it in the.
Oh, okay, so she's one, one, two, three.
Okay.
So that's the AIM program.
Okay.
No, it's listed on the math print page. It spells it out.
Okay, so, um, when it comes to things that we don't have, um, probably the most problematic cut, um, at the central office level for me, uh, it's, it's, uh, well, there are couples.
Don't put words in your mouth.
So I was going, I was going to say that we had a five-year, um, contract to access the math textbook online and next year would be the sixth year. Um, and so there is not currently any budget allocated to.
That's true for Jen, it's.
Let us have a math textbook next year?
Wait, so the textbooks aren't gonna have online?
Access, right.
So now you need the textbooks back?
Well, so it's about thirteen thousand dollars to have a one-year, um, uh, contract. And we would only want the one year, even if there were savings over a multi-year, because we're going into a curriculum review cycle. And it's possible that the key, uh, resource might change in that curriculum, I, I don't know. Um, so all of my grade-level math classes, um, will lose access to their online, um, materials if that were to go through. So, yeah, I have several that are like vying for most important.
And everyone's gotten really used to that, haven't they?
Well, now that, with the Google.
Well, what, what do you do for textbooks?
Well, so now the kids have to just carry the textbooks.
So they do, our students primarily do have a textbook that they leave at home. And what they access at school and what the teachers access up on the smart coordinate, everything is primarily through the online.
Same with Cinerbell?
Yeah, right.
Are your kids losing, um, their, is your five-year contract expiring this year? It was a district.
For math. Okay, so I'm glad we went to, you want to.
So second-class if you and thirty-five thousand.
Access the textbooks online, right?
Is yours about thirteen thousand? Do you know what yours is?
I had, my, mine was closer to, I think it was like seventeen, it was like twenty, two year, put in twenty thousand.
That is high budget.
No, it's not.
It's not, but then.
Back old school.
We're going back old school.
So, but the thirty-five thousand dollars for the textbook and workbooks is to make up for the.
Those might be the consumables.
Yeah, that's just consumables.
I have no consumables.
Just don't grab your math textbook. Cause you've got a line item for textbooks and workbooks.
How much is the?
Oh, it's about seventeen.
About thirteen seventeen.
That's the difference between.
For the district.
No.
No.
For all three.
I thought it was like seventeen.
Just for the grade-level courses at my school. It's slightly over thirteen thousand dollars.
But that's in all the books, is that?
And when we're done, one more, um, library media question that you would ask, I wanna make sure that I answer.
Okay.
Um, so the, um, a couple more cuts that are leaving me vulnerable here. Um, I happen to be the location that has a special education secretary retiring. Um, the current budget doesn't have that, that position being replaced.
Is that the one on the tiers list?
It is.
So I have great big worries about that in terms of, I think that ma-, um, maintaining our service to our parents and our students, making sure that we are compliant with all of the regulations on special education. Um, and I think, I have a huge fear of anything, at any of the buildings, ending up with, um, multiple people trying to piecemeal together covering the special education secretary position. I think that, um, just like every special needs kid is individual, every special needs family is individual. And they certainly, we develop relationships with families and, um, we don't want to, um, be dropping the ball on any, you know, whatever one of us knows, we all know. And we need to have somebody in that, that, um, role that when a piece of information is shared, we're sure it's gonna get to all of the important people to implement change or to, um, you know, make use of that. So, uh, that to me, I don't know that that's necessarily, I, I don't know where that, it can't just be that we don't have somebody at Middlebrook doing that work. Um, certainly we've looked at, um, I also, um, have a cut in a, um, campus supervisor position. Um, we already are stretched very thin on things like lunch duty and recess duty. Um, we are already making, um, difficult choices around that. Um, but also, um, the campus supervisor position will, um, mean that we have no, we, we will have to shift a, a secretarial position to cover, um, the, um, front booth. So, um, I will already have less secretarial time to go around. So it's not like I can just take another secretary and cause them to do special education work.
Can I ask a question about that, if, the affordability issue, is there any benefit of a half-time secretary? You know, in other words, rather than reduce it full, you want it all back, but would a, a, a half-time person? You know, it's, it's a dumb question, but I have to ask it, you know, with less than full-time help?
Well, I, I think that it would behoove us to do some study in terms of how small an FTE we could manage and still have confidence that we're in compliance with everything that needs to get done.
No, we can't close the door.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Sharon, you gotta leave the door open. She couldn't believe it.
So I don't know if, and, and I don't, honestly, I would be shocked if point five would be the number that we would land at.
I just wanna ask the question.
But I think that, you know, I don't know that it needs to be one point oh. Um, but I can't, you know, that, that is not a, um, there's a tremendous amount of paperwork, um, back and forth between the cent, the cent, the district level and the building level. Um, I, I don't know, point five to me.
In special services.
In special services.
Yeah, do you have a full-time secretary in special services? Do you have a person in special, I mean, speaks for herself.
So one of the things we need to do is, what we are doing is looking at secretarial staffing all across the district. So one of the, the, I think, legacy concerns here in the Wilton Public Schools is we don't have staffing models for all of these areas. So, you know, um, with the change in pre-K came a staffing model, with the change in library and learning commons came a staffing model. And so as, as a result of just some of the history, there are some, some. And so, a, as a result of just some of the history, there are some, some discrepancies. So, um, I'm looking at opportunities as people are, uh, retiring or moving on to really question district-wide. You know, can we put some pressure here? And, you know, I think the concern is absolutely, um, a hundred percent. So I've never suggested that we couldn't, um, live without a special services secretary at Middlebrook. But we need to look at secretarial staffing.
K twelve, or district.
Yeah, that's right, pre-K twelve.
I also think in the land of staffing models, you know, part of what my work will entail across special education, across all the buildings, will be working in collaboration with the faculties and administrators and community to talk about what is, what are the appropriate staffing models for special services? Um, so that people do have an understanding of what does it take to run a building of a thousand students? If you have a prevalence rate that's in commensurate with the state level prevalence rates? Um, what do you need to provide services, not only direct service to students? But what do the families need to be able to build trusting relationships that allow us to work with some of the complexities of children with special needs? So that's, it's on the to-do list. Certainly, it wasn't eight, we weren't able to do it before we started building this budget in September, when I was here for a week and a half.
So, um, the third sort of big item for me in terms of cuts that, that came at the central office level, um, like I said, we're in a very steep learning curve period at Miller, at, um, Middlebrook. And, um, teachers are being troopers about it, but, uh, we, we had asked for a significant increase in our, um, professional development, um, line. I had already cut back the requests that, um, came in from the curriculum coordinators. And, um, the most expensive thing that, um, I was looking to add was working with Teachers College, um, on reading and writing workshop. I think that, um, when reading and writing workshop was brought to Middlebrook, there was a, a flexibility of model deliberately sort of decided upon in terms of it not being necessarily the pure workshop. And I think that that puts us in a very weird position in terms of what exactly it should look like. Um, and I think that, um, if, to get the value out of the model, we really need to have clarity on what excellence in that model is going to look like. And I think we're definitely lacking in that area now. I think that our, um, as, I, I happen to be the, the administrator that works with that department. I think, um, I need clarity, my coach needs clarity, my coordinator needs clarity, but every instructor in the department also needs clarity. And I think that they are, at this point, um, doing their best, but under trained, um, when it comes to the model and that why philosophically the model is the way that it is. Um, so while I, I absolutely agree, Kevin will say, no one can say that we don't privilege professional learning. Um, I do agree that, that it's a place that the district has been investing. And I think that it's a place where I'm asking the district to invest more at Middlebrook. I think that when you, when we want to see test scores improve, the only way to do that is through improving instruction. And teachers are wonderful learners, but they can't be completely autodidactic. And if they are autodidactic, then you're gonna get a tremendous amount of lack of continuity of the learner's experience, um, classroom to classroom. Um, so those are like my big three, the special ed secretary, the, um, math textbook and the professional development.
I, I just, um, because we have all three of you here at the same time, um, and it relates to staff development cause obviously the district has invested in the coaching model. So it would be helpful to see some, um, uh, evidence or data for, um, some way of how you are assessing the, its impact on instruction. Um, you know, Catherine, you talked about your teachers, you know, da, 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 da. So, or, you know, I, I don't mean that.
No, no, I, I don't mean that. I meant in an excited way that they were, that they were, you know, that they were, you were buzzing about it. So, um, and, you know, at, and, and, and I know that having watched, um, last year's town meeting and some of the paper reports that coaching comes up as a question. And I think the board, you know, we, we understand the model, at least I think so. And, and, you know, the, the aims of it and impacting instruction. And I just think now would be a good time in front of the budget to have as much, um, input as to how and why and, you know, how far you've come, how far you need to go. Um, and, you know, cause it is, it's, it's another one of these model shifts, um, in terms of how districts traditionally have done staff development. So, and I think it's great that Wilton is there, uh, but it is a big investment. It has been somewhat controversial, um, reading some newspaper reports and letters. So it would just be helpful to have as much information to, and, and that, you know, we've got five minutes left today, but it would just be helpful to be able to speak to it rather than waiting down the road and getting to a later meeting where people understand less and, and we don't have the comeback for that. So I just need some background, and again, not, not right this minute necessarily, maybe Chuck could spearhead it. But just because, and, and so going back to Lauren's question about the reading, writing workshop dollars, you know, to get probably the, uh, people to come consultants or whatever. Um, I, I just think we need to understand, we put a whole lot of money into coaching. And so to level fund traditional staff development funds as a, just financially would seem reasonable. But I'm hearing you say that you need even more. So I just need to put it all together with. Sure.
I'm gonna, um, let Board of Finance member Richard Crease weigh in here.
Yeah, just with Debbie saying that about the, the coaching, um, first off, this has been invaluable.
Good, thank you so much for coming.
To hear the actual principals of the schools talking brings a depth of color to the whole conversation that I haven't seen before, it's really good. Um, so you, you all talked about coaching and what I wanted to mention was, uh, what Debbie says about coaching being a hot topic and the DNC report being a hot topic is very much the case. I just forwarded to you not half an hour ago from my phone, a reply to an email that I got from a, a, a Wilton taxpayer that we all know well, raising in a very, very articulate fashion, those two issues and a couple of others. So, any evidence we can, um, present that shows that this coaching really is delivering value, and it certainly sounds like it is from what you're all saying, um, I think it's really important to get that in front of the public.
Can I just say one thing? And I know I have lots to say in this, so I promise not to do that. But I, I think that we have to be really careful with the evidence that we're looking at. My great concern with how I was hearing this involuntary survey kind of being tossed around is that there are going to be, there's levels of, of, of change, right? And feelings around change. And that coaching, because it's been determined to be the number one impact on teacher improvement and teacher growth, along with change is a lot of discomfort. So, some feedback that you might be getting might be a little, um, seem, appear negative. I think what you have to do is look at actual change, shifted practice. And we can help you guys kind of, um, make that a little more, um, solid. And I would absolutely invite you to come in and do observation. But I get, I got really worried when we were having it be like, um, anonymous kind of, because that, that to me is, um, not gonna be the data that we're really looking at to show, to, to show change. Because along with growth is discomfort. And, um, you know, you just have to be careful with data like that. It could be one piece of information, but we'd have to really make sure we have lots of other information to show the results.
I actually think, Jen, your school is in the best position to show change in teacher practice.
Absolutely.
So, if we could gather some of that information.
I, I think also that sometimes they, um, sometimes we talk about how tight, um, our time is as administrators. And I know, like, you could not shoehorn something else into an administrative day at Middlebrook. It is just, we're rocking and rolling all the time. Our, our primary charge, aside from keeping kids and, and staff safe, is to be instructional leaders. And in terms of bandwidth, you know, I'm trying to move twenty-three teachers on my direct caseload. And, um, the, the value that you get out of a coach who's working at a teacher's salary, um, the amount of growth that she can drive, um, so that, I, I just think it exponentially increases the value of me as a principal, that I have a coach who can help my teachers operationalize the vision that I'm trying to set for them or the demands that I'm placing on them.
Absolutely.
And I think that, um, that like, I feel very much charged with not only being a manager of a staff in a school, but also being, um, driving instruction ever to new heights for, for student achievement. And I think that I can't think of anything that has more value than a coach.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at something what we call adult action indicators. And they're, they're kind of like the end game of what teachers are doing in the classroom. And they're obviously what eventually you, you know, has that nested impact of student achievement, right? So we'll, I'll, we'll gather some information on some adult action indicators. Like what was the coaching priority and what did it look like in the beginning and what did the growth look like?
Well, the trade-off there, you know, from my perspective, is if you didn't have the coaching, then how much more do you have to invest in professional development?
And it would.
It's gonna be an opposite, the two are.
It just would be less effective if you can't even compare the two.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, but if you didn't have the coaching, then how are you going to continue to develop the teachers? Then you've gotta invest in professional development, so.
Slowly.
Yeah.
Well, it's the same thing with curriculum, you know, when we changed the curriculum, like Lauren's example last spring, when you were talking about the coach, if we, you know, introduce a new math curriculum, the coaches facilitate that and think that like, we all just have been, we're still living through the last math change, right? And without the coaches. So the idea that that could speed up that process instead of taking five to six years.
Hands down, it's like that and the I E Ts combined is the most powerful, um, you could read any, you open up any book on education design improvement, whatever, you're not, you're going to find those, um, teacher collaboration and some form of coaching.
So, um, I'll, just, just to be honest, like, I went through my, my big ouch moments, what I can't find. I think there are lots of little things along the way too. I'll, I'll give one just as an example, like, we would, we would have loved to increase our guidance time over the summer a little bit so that when team assignments come out and classroom assignments come out, well, that's a, that's a time when a lot of our parents and students really want some customer service in terms of concerns that they have for the child's schedule. And our guidance counselors are the people who really know that best for our kids. We would, that was one of the requests we made, bringing them in for a couple of extra days, things like additional time in the library. We, we, there are things that we would all love to have that we wouldn't even venture to ask for. You know, I didn't venture to ask for the additional math interventionist. We're really struggling around our A V needs, um, at the, um, at the middle school in the auditorium, you know, in terms of somebody to, to run the system and things that the system needs. I think that in our effort to come in lean and be respectful of the, um, rec, of the target of the district and the target of the, um, Board of Finance, um, we didn't even go down the path of several things that really are needs that we're deprioritizing. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
It would be really helpful, like, on just, even after we meet with the, uh, high school, is just to have one document that by school, if it could be like three to five, I don't wanna call it wish list cause it's not really a wish list, but just like three to five priority that if, if you were able to have one more thing, what would be the top thing? What would be, you know, the three to five items per school?
We haven't even talked about the repairs that are included in the budget.
Which I did mention over the years, we've looked to, um, push off those in an effort to save.
You know, we have some.
Repairs and.
Repairs on the buildings themselves or repairs on equipment in the building?
Both.
Both?
That's both. And some, I mean, some things we, as we discussed last time, we pushed into the, um, some of the bigger ticket items that we could, we bonded or we're proposing to bond, which I think, um, is important to try to do. But other things, we're just, we're stretching out.
Okay. So, I do have any answer anything about Middlebrook?
One quick question. We have the, uh, the schedule by school by name, the.
That the class size report.
Class size report, and we've got every subject matter, English, et cetera, and the names of the teachers, et cetera.
Okay.
And I look at yours and in the sped paraprofessional, we've got a lot of names here, twelve names here. But as I look at the details in paraprofessional, I have two point seven and a one point five. Where are these other people in here?
They're probably picked up in the sped budget.
But where's the?
The special services budget, man.
Okay, which is under.
So it's under, in your budget book, it's under the special services tab.
Okay.
It's a whole different section.
Oh, the whole back here.
Yeah, it's a whole different.
Uh, so you've got fifty-seven, uh.
So you've got that, so it isn't by, so the special services are not allocated by school?
So those are actually general ed, paraprofessionals.
Right, so you're in, in the operating budget.
These are speds, these are all speds, they're gonna be general ed, that's what I said.
Yeah, just a note on that, if you don't mind, because as we convert to a different, um, general ledger software, this model is going to go away, you know, cause I think it, it makes it really clumsy when we pull things out artificially by department and not by location.
Okay. The other question, in, in Middlebrook, as an example, and it shows up, it's reflected in the other schools, this year in Middlebrook, we have an account, uh, eleven hundred, which is public tuition. And in our budget this year, we have an income line of thirty-eight thousand dollars. We have nothing in next year's proposed budget, so that rolls over as an expense of thirty-eight thousand dollars since that income went away, which is, doesn't really, I'm, if you look at a lot, in Middlebrook, eleven hundred.
Yeah.
We had thirty-six thousand in two thousand fifteen, sixteen as income. We had nothing sixteen, seventeen. And we have another thirty-eight thousand seventeen, eighteen, and we have nothing eighteen, nineteen in terms of tuition. And it's, it's weird to reach into the facilities. Can we get a handle on that and understand that goes?
I'll find out exactly. I know that was how things were classified last year versus how they were classified this year. There was a couple of things, so I'll get an email out to you where it went.
But public tuition shouldn't, should never show as an expense, as income.
It's not showing as an expense.
But we're showing now, it's reflected as a thirty-eight thousand dollar expense for, uh, increase. Increase is a thirty thousand dollar increase.
That's the difference.
That's just the difference on it, but I'll find, what, just to let the.
But that, that affects the, uh, the dollars and the percentage.
Right, but there's probably a category somewhere else where it's merged into, so that's why I wanna make sure, but you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Just if I could just make a quick comment on, over the weekend, myself and Mary Ann came in and, um, as you know, some of the interventionists and things were broken out separately stem. We went through line by line and matched it up and took, took out from the historical side of it where they were and put it where they are now. So that when you look at those line items that have a brand-new year and it looks like it's all new, it's not. So once we have, we tied everything out, we're just making sure the back sheets are tied out, then it'll be clear to be able to see it. There won't be these massive variances of seven hundred thousand savings here and four hundred expenses. So we even that all out so it looked, and we went person by person and moved them, so it would look even.
Thank you.
So we get that out.
Thank you.
And that, I'll, I'll explain that difference too, if we move that thirty-eight thousand where it went.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much, again, for all the time that we've been to the floor to come this afternoon. Um, we're gonna adjourn, um, now, President, to go to the ladies.
We're here again tomorrow at one.
We'll be here tomorrow at one with, um, Wilton High School Principal O'Donnell and, um, Technology and Digital.
Right, and Chris McKeever.
And Alex, right.